Good evening, everybody. Before we get started, we'll just, we'll just wait a minute or two for, for Bill Cray to arrive for a presentation that's number one on the agenda.
He's on it.
Oh, great. Hi, Bill. Are you here, Bill? Is he muted, Rick?
I'm looking.
Well, he's, he's here now.
Yeah, I see. Yeah, he's muted.
Okay.
Yep, I'm here.
Hey, Bill. How are you doing?
Good, good.
All right, so, welcome, everybody. We have a really full agenda tonight. We're glad that we could have Bill Cray here with us at the very beginning, though, to talk about the revised proposal that we got that I shared with everyone. Combining, where Grandview would combine the services of a owner's rep and construction management for the Kelly Primary School project. So, well, I'm just going to turn it over to you, if you don't mind, and to talk about. I know that there will be a couple of questions, but, you know, let's let you talk about maybe primarily the differences between Proposal A and Proposal B, and what that does for us.
Sure. Well, you know, the revised proposal really came out of a conversation that Matt, Rick, and Joe and I had two plus weeks ago. Were we were talking about Matt's revisions to my first proposal, which, you know, really shifted the tasks and oversight to a much more, you know, robust participation. So, you know, I was hesitant to do that, but then, you know, after Matt and I spoke, I went back and revisited and submitted this revised proposal. So, they're really two, two distinct, but yet merged together services. So, the owner's rep piece is still sitting there, which involves my direct participation for you. You're getting my 30 years of expertise and oversight and guidance through, you know, managing your consultants, your, you know, the phasing, the staging. That, you know, I'm the face that's speaking to you however often you want an update. And I'm giving you recommendations on how to respond to changes, whether they are physical or financial. And ultimately, where we are via schedule. So, that piece of it's still there. What's added is the construction management piece. And, you know, that's basically two plus three or four people. So, that would include, you know, a full-time onsite project manager, onsite admin, and then some back office scheduling and other items on a maybe 50% basis. So, there's a direct cost that I'm managing inside of that proposal that, you know, you would have otherwise had baked that into your overall costs. So, you know, you're, you're getting both. And I'm not certain who was on the board when you had your Turner project executed, but what you didn't have was my piece of that. You had the CM piece, but you didn't have an owner's rep component. So, and again, my, my advice to, you know, you and and it could be, you know, other nonprofits that I work for or for-profit. You guys are running, you know, your business. You're out to educate kids and, and manage, you know, that overall task, which is a major one. And you really don't have the time to come in and out of this project and make intelligent decisions. And there'll be a lot of them in this process. And also to say that this, from what I'm gathering, and again, I'm not deep into the weeds on, on where the design is. But, you know, what I have learned since we talked the last time is that, you know, you want to be able to execute this work while the kids are at school. And, you know, that's a, that's a major undertaking. It is a challenge from a life safety standpoint and keeping the kids safe, while keeping the contractor safe. It's also, you know, I think going to be a challenge from an accessibility standpoint, too. So, that task in and of itself, you know, I would encourage you to have somebody a little more seasoned, being able to speak and guide that than, say, just a straight-up construction manager who, you know, might have 10 years' experience and but really not skilled at the people's side or the strategic components of, of what has to happen. You know, I, I think the, the other piece, too, is, and I don't know how this is going to be, you know, would, would play out, but, you know, do you build in this offloading directly to one of these other contractors that can do, you know, and a comprehensive scope as opposed to multiple subs? That's something we still need to explore. And Joe, you introduced me to, or sent some information on some options that might change the how this thing gets structured down the road, but it's too early to make a decision around that, but I'll give you direction around it. So, I just think there's some really key strategic issues you've got to face, coupled with the fact that the, these direct reports are to me. They're not coming to you. They're not going to be part of, you know, chasing Joe down or anybody else on the admin side. It's all through me.
So, Bill, before I open it up to questions, can you address one other thing for me? I heard from you maybe about two weeks ago that you had been in touch with someone by coincidence from Nello Construction, and that they had some documents that you thought were interesting and/or of value to us. At this point, can you talk about those just for a second?
Yeah, and, and, yeah, two, two things around that. One is, and again, I don't, I don't know where you are with your architect, so that's still a big unknown for me. But, you know, you basically had a full set of plans approved and permitted back in 2018. From what I gather is, you know, there've been changes, you know, there, the building code has, has evolved since 2018. So, there, there were, there would be changes. I'm a little surprised that it was starting over from scratch, and that's what I think has happened. But again, I don't want to make any assumptions. So, you've got a, you know, I don't know how much you spent in 2016, 17, 18 in, in your first run at this, but I suspect it was significant. You know, maybe not 900,000, but I bet you over half a million. And now you're turning around and having to duplicate that, which, again, a little bit of a surprise, but maybe there's some really good logic to it with the architect. They did mention that there were changes in, in code. And again, I get all of that, but it's a shame that we had a, basically, you know, toss out completely everything that you would have worked on, you know, four or five years ago. That's one piece of it. The other, the other one is, you know, Nello is familiar with this. They, they bid the general trade component of the 2018 project. You didn't go through with it, but they're familiar with the building. And I would piggyback them inside of my work to make sure that, you know, their knowledge is leaned on and, and part of your whole effort to try to bring this in under, under budget and on schedule.
Yes.
I did a lot of work with Nello. I probably have done 15 projects with Nello on, on, not schoolwork. Private, you know, development. They did the 7,800 exterior recently for Bridgeway over in Wilkins or in Homewood. They're good, they're good, solid contractors with, with, you know, education as part of their resume.
So, one other thing. So, 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 just to wrap up here on the plans and the documents that you found. So, so, once we had some paperwork signed with you, one of the first things you would do, this is a question, would be to get with those, our architects and those plans and maybe try to sort out where are they? And, but what if this is actually usable, right? What would be current designs and goals and what doesn't?
Yeah, at least get you an explanation. You know, it sounds like they, they didn't lean too hard into those original plans, but I'm just curious of why. So, I, you know, there's a lot to uncover there, just to get up to speed on where your architect is in the process. As I mentioned, you know, several times, I think the core, where you have that winding stair or ramp system, you know, when I saw these schematic plans, you have an elevator going inside of that, and those ramps are modified to, you know, a step and ramp, I think, system is the best I can see it. That's a place where you, you connect to all of your wings, right? And I'll be just curious to how they plan on implementing that and not, and avoid the major disruption to, you know, your school operations.
There's actually sort of a 3D schematic that I can send you on that.
Yeah, I've seen a couple of them. I think I've seen the schematic.
The one that moves?
Yeah, no, it's, it's all very cool. I mean, and it would be really, you know, it'd be manageable to do it if the building was vacant. It's not a three-month project.
Right, I know.
This isn't a summer, that's not a summer, and I'm just, you know, I know what it takes to get an elevator installed. It's not easy and, and get it approved for operation.
Right. All right. So, so that we, that this dialogue is nice, but I know that other people have questions. So, what I'd like to do is, we just came from a finance meeting. I know some people in that room had questions about the project. So, I'd like to start with any questions that are still lingering from that meeting, and then we can open it up to the rest of the board, if that's acceptable to everybody.
Hi, Mr. Cray. This is Vanessa Bufree. I just want to preface this question with the fact that I'm outside the field and I don't know what I don't know. So, apologies if this is not a smart question, but what would happen if we didn't have a CM? Like, if we put our designs out to bid and we contracted with Nello per se? Can you sort of break down for us, laypeople, how, what are we missing out on?
So, one is, and Matt could probably walk you through it a little bit better, but you have to have a CM. So, the question is, do you, and you could cut my piece out, right? I'm not the, the time and effort that I'm, I'm giving you, you could, that's a piece that you don't necessarily have to have, but I think what you'd find if, is, then the CM is going to be reporting to you. And it's only as good as the, as the project manager assigned to the CM. So, if that project manager, again, is a, you know, maybe a five- to 10-year veteran, you know, his communication skills and his, his decision-making and guidance, you're going to have to lean into. You know, so if he's coming back and says, look, you, you've got a half a million dollar change order, and it's just is what it is, and I'm not giving you a real, you know, he can give you an explanation, but he doesn't necessarily give you a pathway to resolve it, you know, it's only, you're, you're stuck with your information.
So, just to clarify, we would need to hire a construction manager anyway. Again, this is probably a dumb question. They wouldn't come with Nello?
No, no, you'd need a CM. And, and, you know, you're, there's CMs out there. I was trying to think of the firm that was your CM at Turner.
Foreman, Foreman Group.
Which was it?
Well, it started as Foreman, and they were based by FMS.
Yeah, FMS. FMS was your CM.
Right.
And then the CM went on to hire your sub-primes.
Can I clarify before we go too far down a wrong path, if you will? School districts are required by law to have what are called multi-prime contracts. You have to have separate contracts let to general trades, plumbing, electrical, and HVAC. So, what, in the Turner project, you hired a CM. Again, FMS actually did the project, but they are an agency CM. They don't hold the contracts with those, those trades. So, I, you know, when, when Bill was saying you have to have a CM, that's not a legal conclusion. That's his recommendation from a construction perspective. Nothing in law requires you to have a CM on a project.
But, but Matt, you'd be contracting directly with those multiple primes?
We will on either event.
Either, either of it, right.
Because we have to by state law.
Joe would have to step in to manage them.
Yeah, what we're talking about is a level of management, but
Right, I'm sorry.
With or without a construction manager, we have to bid multi-primes, and those contracts are solely through the district. They're not, we cannot do what you would see in the private sector of having a singular entity, one neck to choke, if you will. We don't have that luxury. We have to, by law, award multiple prime contracts.
Yeah. So, and again, the challenge is you get multiple prime contracts, and those contracts have to blend together. There, there obviously is, you know, a sequencing of their work that if you were, you didn't have the CM, you would be burdened with trying to manage the execution of these multiple primes, multiple sub-prime. On top of, you know, you've got to assemble budgets, you've got to assemble schedules. And you've got to price out, you know, as this design goes through, seeing where there are gaps between these multiple sub-primes. So, that's the purpose of, of the CM sitting in that position of soliciting numbers in the marketplace, shuffling them back through to me and back out to you to say, look, this is the recommendation. This is where we are. These are the things that we did to try to knock those numbers back or, or improve the schedule. But there's an added challenge in this process that the CM has, even though he's not at risk, the CM is still managing, you know, activities on the site that, you know, if it's not welded together, it's a lot of finger pointing, right? There's a lot of, of, of challenges that come with that, that one of those primes is going to say, well, I was delayed, and I want an extra because the other prime didn't, sub-prime didn't execute on time.
And that's what we had with the last CM. I'd go to the construction meetings on Fridays, and everybody's finger pointing.
Yeah.
So, just a, just a final follow-up to that. In the budget that you saw from our current architects, do they have a line item for some type of construction management? And really where I'm going with this as an end question is, when we look at our budget as proposed currently by the architects, should I be viewing your, your sort of value add, your, your cost as at least partially included in that, or as an additional line item on top of it?
Vanessa, there was a, a line item, and I don't have it in front of me, but I, I'm guessing it was like 375. And I don't know how they derived that number. I've, again, had a chance to talk to the architect. But, you know, if that's based on, on a $1.500 project, that's their number, right? It's, it's woefully low for a CM. CM, the actual out-of-pocket cost, the direct employee cost totals 487,000.
Okay, thank you for that. I'm at least happy to hear that some of it's already accounted for in our consideration of our numbers. Thank you.
Hey, Bill. Thank you for that information. Can you talk more about how you arrived at the 6% of the total cost for the construction manager?
Yeah, Rob, it's really a combination of, you know, you had my, my cost. I gave you that. It's my, my oversight. I thought it actually was the staffing to meet the requirements that the CM agency position is dictating. And again, that's two full-time and then two part-time. It includes a pre, a pre-development component involving three pricing exercises. It involves the, the preparation of bid documents to each one of the multiple sub-primes. And then, obviously, the scheduling that comes with it. So, as I just said, that's, that's over 450,000 of direct out-of-pocket in, in the, in the field time. And that's the assumption that's a 15-month construction schedule, too. You know, if it were to extend, obviously, that cost gets, gets, would increase. But I have no way of knowing what a real schedule is until you dive into how the architect, his timing and how they expect this to be executed. It will be a longer construction period because you're going to have to try to pace this thing and maneuver around the operation. So, it's naturally going to have a higher price tag.
Does the CM physically just sit at the site all day?
Yeah. There is a, there is a project manager and an admin on the site every day. And again, you think about it, they're babysitting, you know, five subcontractors that are walking over each other, right? And, you know, if the mechanical contractor, you know, can't access a space because the general trades didn't demo a wall, you know, it's the responsibility of that CM to make sure the general trades is in there doing the work in advance of the, of the mechanical.
I've got to think that, that, I've got to think that that role is even more critical considering they're, we're going to have children in that building and employees. And this is, the more you talk and the more we think about this, this is going to be an amazingly complex project.
Yeah.
We just don't have any choice.
And Bill, you might have mentioned, okay, you just said two full-time, two part-time, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, now, I know coming into the end of that last project, you know, the issue was running, you know, way over. The expected dates, more cost, more change orders. People blaming everybody, but then I, you know, as I show up on site, it's 2:30 and everybody's gone for the day. Finding out that the CM wasn't even on site for more than maybe three days out of the month, three to five days out of the month. With this, is there any guarantees? Percentage, you know, there won't be change orders. It will be done on time. Is there things like that?
Joe, I can't give you any guarantees on the change order, and I can't give you any guarantee on the schedule without having ever talked to the architect and gotten to understand it. But even after you get a clear understanding and you're out to market and, and you've signed contracts, it's really challenging, I think, again, in the fact that it is a phased project and you're, you're doing this while the school's operating to lock anybody up on a, on a not-to-exceed number. It's a renovation, and, and it is complex. Now, we'll do our best to try to package that as tight as it can be and hold people's feet to the fire to make sure they're hitting their schedules. You know, one other factor, you didn't have it Turner, that we've got it across the marketplace, are materials. So, mechanical equipment, it is such a long lead item. You know, that's, that's a variable in this that nobody can predict. Now, can we mitigate some of that by, again, getting subcontractors identified and locked in and shop drawings signed off on and materials maybe being purchased well in advance of when you would traditionally do, you know, a traditional schedule would dictate? Sure. We're doing that on other projects. We're jumping ahead and buying certain things, you know, six months in advance of when you would normally have purchased a product. But that, that just, that's going to come toward the end of the pre-development component to give you a really good glimpse of, here's your schedule, here's your budget, here's the risks. You know, here's the potential places where this thing is going to go, you know, over. Let's hold some contingency to make sure we're covering it.
One last question, Bill.
Can I make one more comment? Zach, I think what I can tell you, you asked for guarantee. What I can tell you is there'll be a, they'll, the people that are responsible to be on site on the CM level will be on site. And I'll guarantee the fact that, you know, if, they, they will be present in managing that project, whether there's any activity going on or not. They'll be on site because there's work to do every day. Even though there's no subcontractors on site, there's still work.
Yeah, yeah. And as I mentioned before, you know, you get plumbers blame electricians, electricians blame an HVAC. All that because there was no coordination from our previous CM, so it became, we came, we came at a stalemate. Now, let me, one more question. Are we, are you stuck on two full-time, two part-time? Was there any movement on there as one full-time, one part-time?
You know, I, again, I would, knowing the complexity and knowing you've got an operating school, don't, don't shortcut the admin side. You know, it, it just, I think, you know, leads to some gaps that we don't need. You just cited the people, you know, these, these conflicts. You got the right people and the right talent sitting in the leadership positions. They make sure that those conflicts are mitigated. If you start backing off on, on, in, in the staffing side, there's more opportunity for something to get missed. Paper, paper flow on projects is, is essential. Organizational skills is huge. You know, you, you want it so that it's so seamless, nobody can question, you know, was something reviewed, priced, and processed appropriately? And that you, as an owner, you as the school district, get that documentation at the end of the project that is a full closeout of the, of the project and a great history of what transpired. And I got the sense from Turner, you didn't get that.
And again, Bill, and, and again, I, I wasn't here at the beginning of the process of Turner. You know, I don't know what kind of, you know, words were said from the other, you know, CM at the time. So, I don't know what kind of, you know, promises were made and at the, at that time. I just, I got to the tail end of it, knowing the project was three to six months behind, and I'm showing up at 2:30, and there's no subcontract, there's not a worker on site. You know, so that, that became an issue with, you know, with me. So, when we had to have our kids in the building in September, and it's now October, you know?
Yeah.
Other questions for Bill?
Bill, this is Vanessa again. Did you see any immediate opportunities for cost savings when you viewed the architect's numbers to date or proposal to date?
Vanessa, to be honest with you, the only thing I've seen is a couple pages of a schematic. Seen no drawings. I toured the building, and I've seen, you know, a one-page budget. Seen no schedule. See no schedule, see no no work product other than those pieces from the architect. There may be material out there, I just haven't seen it.
I feel the same.
Yeah, I can't tell you, you know, did I walk through the building? Do I have a lot of questions? Yeah. And, you know, Joe and I wrestled with some of that we were walking through. I just don't know how. I, you know, take take for instance, the kitchen. The cafeteria, right? That that cafeteria is is really tricked out. I mean, it's you've got some great equipment down there and you've got you know, an abundant amount of space. I'm curious of how they plan to modify it other than the queuing lanes for for service. I know they've got to put a lid on the ceiling for for current code. But, you know, that one item, you know, you got to dive into the drawings and see what they're proposing for all for all I know and maybe and maybe you guys don't know, maybe they're replacing all the kitchen equipment. I don't know, you know. It certainly doesn't have to happen, that's for sure. You know, there were I saw there were two spaces that and they're large spaces, the cafeteria in one, the kitchen component of it. The other one was the gymnasium where, you know, you've got some ceiling and mechanical work and maybe some upgrading lighting, but all right, let's go through that exercise. What are they proposing? I don't know, but there's it's two large spaces in that building that you would hope that they'd be judicious on how they're being modified. And I don't know what direction you gave them. You know, maybe they don't have any direction and they're just making the assumption that, you know, we can do what we want in those spaces.
Thank you.
So hey, Bill, one, just one more thing, this is Ed. I'm probably too anxious to jumpstart this, but I get nervous about the the fact that we lose a month and we lose a month and we lose a month. So if we don't have time to really review and get our team together and go through your latest proposal by next week when we vote. Your original proposal, we did go through and approve and we I think we I think we voted on that one already. Does it make any sense for the first month or two to go ahead and start work with you under the under the existing agreement so that you can meet with the architects and get the ball rolling here and get your comfort level up and then convert to the new proposal with the CM? I mean, do we need?
Why don't why don't here's a better suggestion.
Yeah.
I was thinking about that since our call last week. The the pre development component of this, I think, is 167,000. Let me just double check that number. Then how many months that carries out? One second.
Bill, it's 167,000 over 10 months.
Over 10 months. So you you'll get everything on the pre development for 10 months, for 167. Then you guys decide whether you want to lock me up and go go the next step. All right, I'll take the, you know, I'm taking a risk that you 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 don't approve the second half of this, but I think in that time period, I can tee this project up for you and get you in a place where you know your schedule, you know your budget, you know where the value engineering opportunities are. And you'll have professional presentations made to you for you guys to green light the bigger project. And and look, if at that point you say, Bill, go, you know, we're fine, we'll just pay for the CM piece of it, I'm okay with that. You know, I offer that to everybody and I wound up getting the whole project. So, you know, I'm I'm fine with it. I think I'll demonstrate the value to you in that in that 10 month period.
So you're saying, so I think I think you just gave me a yes.
I gave you a yes inside of what you've already approved.
Okay, great. That's great. That's great. That's great. So I don't know where we are with that. I don't know. I don't think I signed anything yet on that, but I'll get with Rick and Joe tomorrow and make sure that we get that official and and bingo.
We have to compare what you what you had in front of you and what you what Bill had put out with his revised proposal. Correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, but your latest proposal, even within the pre-construction phase is more detailed than what you initially.
Oh, it is. It is. And it includes, again, three pricing exercises. You know, the preparation of of, you know, the the bid. You know, it's it's it is much more detailed than originally had proposed.
So, yeah, Ed, we've sort of got to reconcile that before you sign anything.
But the money side of it is inside of what you had approved.
Yeah, my question shows how little I know about this.
Yeah.
Matt, does the new contract have the same stipulation that it can be canceled basically at any time with like?
Again, we'd have to develop that new contract. Joe gave us is simply a proposal with an expanded scope of services. So we would have to, you know, and go back and basically take a look at the contract that I prepared, Bill had some comments on it. And mold that with the scope of services that he provided in this most recent proposal. So as I look, go ahead, Bill.
Termination was a seven day termination, right? I'm fine with that.
Yeah, so that's what we had in that initial proposal.
Hey, Bill, how will you go ahead and hire the CMs? Do you have relationships with different companies now or what does that process look like?
I I would gauge no. If you're not satisfied, again, if you wanted my service and you didn't like how they're feeding up into the pre development phase, we can renegotiate, you know.
What was their name? Sorry.
Nello Construction.
Okay. Would it be appropriate for us to take that to bid or is that part of the deal?
It's up to you. I mean, it's actually ours, so I'd prefer to work with them. Ultimately, they're my responsibility. As opposed to going out and pricing that service and then I'm I got to make you you're going to maybe pick somebody that's a lower cost provider, but I don't trust. I mean, ultimately, it's fallen under my control.
Right.
I I know these guys, I know what they produce in terms of 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 the budgets and scheduling and confident I can ride them out to, you know, a strong finish. But again, I'm open to any of that.
Yeah, yeah. As an example of that, on the Turner project, we had we first engaged Foreman to be the construction manager and in that whole pre development, pre construction phase, we were paying them a really hefty chunk of money every month and getting nothing in return, just because that's what that's when the contract started. So we learned a little bit about that. That's why I think drawing from Nello would be a good.
Yeah, the other benefit of Nello, they know the building, they've got the drawings, at least, you know, the original set, obviously these will change, but they they bid the low cost general trades package on 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 this in 2018. So I like the institutional knowledge personally. You know, from from my engagement downstream.
Okay, any other questions for Bill? And I realize we may have to, we may actually have to some board people and build together again. But any other questions for Bill for now? Any questions for us, Bill?
No, just, you know, look forward to getting going.
Yeah, me too.
You know, I think there's some critical time needed with the architect and hey, Matt, I read the agreement that you sent. They actually have, I think, an approval right of the CM.
I believe that's in the what I had sent, yes.
Yeah, so just keep a note of that.
And we can talk, Bill, you know, Nello, to the extent that they're going to be involved in this pre-construction phase, that may preclude them from bidding on the project.
They won't bid.
They they. I wouldn't want to go down that path.
No, 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 they they'll they'll walk away from that.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, we will decide something, Bill.
Yeah.
We can.
Yeah, keep me posted, look forward to hearing from you, okay?
Thank you so much.
They have a great night.
You too, thanks. All right, I suggest that we just get, you know, the the construction, the capital project group and pull you in on that, Rob, and and get a decision made about where we want to go, pull Matt in on that discussion and 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 make a decision as quickly as I can because otherwise we're going to lose another month, you know.
Right.
And this is this is critical time.
That was helpful. Thank you.
All right, okay, so we can move along here. This next section is yours, Dr. Monoschnik, right? Hey, by the way, if there are members of the public here and anybody has a question, just please use the raise your use the raise your hand feature and we're happy to take questions from Wilkinsburg residents about anything on the agenda. Dr. Joe.
Did Matt have anything on solicitor's report?
Oh, yeah, right. Anything to add to your report, Matt? I'm sorry, I'm just so used to hearing no.
Well, actually, tonight I do, Ed. As we reported and as some more members know, we had a local agency hearing beginning of the month on an employee matter. I did forward to you today the transcript and exhibits from that hearing. And that that hearing should result ultimately in a decision that we would set forth in an adjudication. So we need to take up that adjudication either next week or in June. So if you haven't seen it, check your email. As I said, I sent all that material to you along with a draft adjudication and, you know, the board at some point needs to collectively discuss that and move forward in one direction or the other with it. That's all I have, Ed.
Thanks, Matt. All right.
For me, just want to first off to be, I don't want to steal Kerry's thunder, they got some things about PSSAs, but I want to thank you know, Kerry, Rachel Summer and the rest of the staff with their, you know, support preparation for PSSAs. But most importantly, students, I think you'll see our, you know, our attendance rates were good. It was implemented, managed well, and that's a that's a thank you to Mr. Kozar, Mr. Cole, because I don't know, you know, if the board really understands that how much time and effort goes in, just not only, you know, those few days, but the preparation for like up to those days and the staff has to be trained and so on. There's there's a lot that goes in with PSSAs. As we always said, PSSAs isn't something, you know, everybody complains about them, but we like the data and that's I know, you know, that's important to have that data. It's just sometimes the time and effort. Very challenging. So I want to thank all those people who went very well and I know Ms. McClellan had some information on that tonight as well. Some other things that I've been involved with, you know, we did do another visit to Sunrise and Mr. Steadley was part of that. We're still in the process of working that maybe someday you guys will quit hearing about the roof down the road. Hopefully sooner than later. Also, I've been participating with some countywide representatives on truancy issues. Not only in, you know, in our district, but all districts, it's been an issue and then, you know, with COVID and things like that, it's added to the concern. So we're just initially started meeting and trying to come up with some ideas and maybe working with accounting agencies a little bit closer as partners, as a group in supporting the, you know, the improvement of student attendance in schools. And lastly, I am meeting with AIU representatives this week just to discuss the current services that we have and any possible future services to see if we can maximize our relationship with them as well. And, you know, you know, we do, you know, pay some fees to them, but we also want to make sure we're getting our best bang for our bucks. So that's what I've been involved with. I do have some staff members that normally wouldn't present tonight. But I know, you know, it was requested about PSSA information and some summer school information. So we have some some of the different people presenting tonight to help with that and we'll student month next week, because I agree student month is much better when we're in person. That's all I have.
Okay, I think I think Kerry.
Okay. Rick, are you or are you going to pull up the PowerPoint?
Yeah, give me one second.
Okay, thanks.
Monica and I had a chance to walk the halls of Turner a little bit last week, just as the math PSSAs were wrapping up and the kids were exhausted. Teachers were treating them to some of the rooms were dark and the kids were watching a movie or having some popcorn, a little snack as a reward. But it was clear that the kids worked really hard, the teachers were really psyched.
Yeah, and I want to thank Ed, Monica, the board, everybody. We got so many compliments. I tried to forward some of those compliments to the board. The staff appreciation for teacher appreciation week. Of course, when we do a teacher appreciation week, we try to include everybody because we feel it doesn't even, you know, if you're if you're a custodian, if you're a secretary, you're having interactions with kids. So that qualifies you as an educator in some manner. So a lot of staff has appreciated the extra effort that went in this year from the board as well. So thank you.
It was great.
Okay, all right. Okay, you can go to the first slide, Rick. Okay, the first slide is the PSSA, the ELA. It's broken down by, you know, the day one, day two, day three, and then the three day average of the attendance for grades three, four, five and six. So that is pretty self explanatory. And then on the next slide, Rick, is the math. And the math is for two days, again, the same grade levels, three, four, five and six. And then at the bottom, it gives the two day average for math. And then on the next slide is the science as well. That is for two days. And it also gives the two day average. The overall percentage is lower. We do give science only on there are fewer groups and we do test on Thursday and Friday, which we are looking at that because typically, you know, we're thinking that we won't test on Friday as a testing day, but this year we did test on Friday and the percentage was low. And I will say though, also, we still have makeups to do. So these, we still have tests that have, you know, makeups are still happening until I believe the 27th is the window. Okay, then on the next slide is the enrollment. So the enrollment, we have enrollment for the first, second and third quarter. Then at the end of this nine weeks, so probably in June, I will have the fourth quarter enrollment and then all of the averages for that. So the enrollment, I mean, has gone up, down, some no change, but the enrollment has been steady. And then on the next slide, we have the attendance and our attendance definitely has increased, not, you know, it may be as much as we wanted, but it definitely has increased, which is good. And I think that everyone's incentives, you know, throughout the building has definitely helped. We had grade level incentives as well as building wide incentives. So that was very helpful and the kids really enjoyed, you know, participating in the attendance incentives. And then on the next slide, I just put down a few end of year updates and reports that are required by PDE to be submitted each year by, you know, we have our school nurse. She has to submit a Shar's report and I briefly put on there what that was, reporting out on reimbursement and on different health services that the school district provides. Ms. Cameron always has to submit a report, you know, through the education for children and youth experiencing homelessness. So that is a report that is required as well. Our guidance 339 plan, that is a work in progress this year. The focus will be looking at specific career awareness data and goals that the students have developed. And all of these reports are submitted, have to are required to be submitted by June 30th. And then every year, Mr. Graham, he submits a student assistance program, which is SAP, the 4092. It's a year end SAP report that gets submitted to PDE. that gets submitted to PDE. And Liz, Ms. Freiberger and I will work on our school-wide positive behavior intervention and support school-wide PBIS report, which will provide information on referrals, expectations, just different behaviors that um, that we see more often. It'll just help us see what was really working and then what we can change and make better for next year. And I also put on here our Oasis tutoring. We got off to a late start due to the pandemic, of course. And, um, but we will, they have, you know, they've been there for, you know, a couple of months now, and their last day will be on May 27th. And then we will get together with Oasis over the summer, just to plan for next year. So we have tutoring set up in both buildings. And then we have the, you know, uh, the field trips and end-of-year events. So you can go to the next slide where we see a whole list of events, and I can send this out in email, but I did want to highlight, we do have uh, Field Day at Kelly Primary beginning on June 1st. We do do it on a couple of different days at the primary level. We have Fun Day at Turner on June 6th, as well as pre-K promotion. And then we have our sixth grade promotion on June 7th. And we will have uh, formal invitations made for the school board and Dr. Maluschnik and parents and everybody, so they are invited. And that is all I have. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
If no one else does, I do. Um, Carrie, this is also for you, Joe. I, I, I think, I know I sound like a broken record when it comes to attendance and reaching out, you know what I mean, to kids who are absent, especially if any of them are chronically absent. And so I'll just ask again, are we satisfied with, with the effort and the results that we're getting from the SAP team, the social work, uh, social worker, other folks who, you know what I mean, who would be involved in reaching out to those families where where kids aren't in school, or even looking at those numbers and saying, okay, so uh, there are three kids from the same family who factor into those absences, so maybe we need a visit to the home. Uh, are we doing, are we taking all those steps, Joe? Or Carrie, sorry?
Yeah, yeah, we are, um, we are, now we are able to do home visits. So we haven't been up until, you know, um, you know, recently, but we are, and we are, uh, Mr. Graham and Ms. Bedeau are going, we're going through the attendance call, or procedures, you know, writing the attendance plan, um, meeting with the parents up until the point of submitting the citation. Um, and then after the citation is submitted, it is, excuse me, I don't want to say it's out of our hands completely, but basically it, it gets turned over to the magistrate and then she handles it from there. And I know that a lot of that scheduling was really, really backlogged and behind because of the pandemic. So, um, but yes, we are, I think we're definitely doing a, a better job. We're staying on top of the attendance and um, some of the, you know, situations are complicated. But I do feel that we are staying on top of them, and I think it was much better that we can do home visits now.
Yeah, and I just, um, it's funny you just said that. I just did send an email out to um, counselors, SAP, homeless liaison, uh, social worker, so on. Just sent that out. That has a concern, and, and the reason why it became a concern, not only for us, but also, you know, I, I'm involved with that truancy initiative. Do I think we could do more? Yes, I think we can do more. Are, are we better than where we were? Yeah, but we want to, that's why I started this conversation. I want to find out, are we maximizing our resources? And like Ms. McClellan said, you know, we were held up this year with not being able to do home visits for a lot of, most of the year, and we were also are the, the um, magistrate, you know, with, with everything going on, wasn't seeing a lot of our students and so on. Um, not, not her fault, but that's local magistrates across the county. So this is going to be a topic of discussion that we're going to have with that team um, to address any deficiencies and weaknesses that we have, that we have to, you know, maximize. What, what can our counselors do? What can our social worker do? What can our truancy officers do? And making sure that we're, you know, using our resources to the best of our abilities. So I'm glad you asked that question.
Okay, thanks. Oh, sorry, I was muted. Carrie, thank you for that, especially for the information on PSSAs. Um, and, and thanks for everything else you're doing also. Um, and um, and Summer, you're up.
Okay, I'm going to give an update this evening on our summer enrichment program. Current uh, PPS data from our cross-functional meeting I will send out in my update this week. So plans for the summer enrichment program have been underway. Uh, teaching assignments have been assigned for those teachers that shown interest within the district. Uh, we still need a few teachers to fill in gaps in some areas, because our goal is to have two teachers per grade level, if enrollment is where it needs to be. And our goal is to keep our classrooms small during the summer enrichment program, so we can get as much out of those four weeks as we can. So I am myself, Rachel, and Carrie are interviewing um, some candidates this week. A lot of our candidates work in school, so it's finding time virtually to be able to do those interviews. So we will have a couple of names for the board for uh, next week to fill in those, those gaps. The next slide will, I do have a slide where you'll be able to, to see where those gaps are. Um, I did send out letters to all children that teachers recommended for the summer program. And based on those responses, we will most likely be able to open it up to more students, but we like to first invite the students that were recommended by teachers. So those were all sent, um, out.
Think she's, she frozen?
She's muted.
Oh geez, I'm sorry. If you can go back one slide. On this slide, you'll be able to see uh, the dates, class sizes. All of this information was also sent home to parents. So they're able to see um, what we're doing during the enrichment program. So we will have the program from June 20th through July 14th. Students will attend from 8:30 to 12:30, and it will be a four-week program. Uh, we like to keep our class sizes intentionally small, so we're able to target more skills and be, and have more specialized instruction for uh, the different needs of students that may be attending. Uh, the teachers will use um, specific curriculum design for summer school. So we have focus standards um, that each grade level recommends that teachers uh, teach during that time for both remediation and enrichment. And we also use some of our programs that we're currently using. Uh, all students will receive a free lunch and a small breakfast snack when they come in in the morning. And we are planning on taking the uh, students on a field trip during this time. And like I said, busing will be available for students who currently ride a bus. And we are partnering again with the YWCA to provide STEM kits. So the students will engage in STEM lessons throughout the day, also while they're there at the program. On the next slide, you can currently see the staff in-house that are signed up um, for the summer program. And to see there are some um, gaps of where we need to fill in, and that's what we're currently doing with our interviews um, this week. And we will have a coordinator in both buildings during this time, so that person will be able to uh, assist staff, assist with drop-off and pickup, if we have any students that may get sick. If attendance is low, make phone calls, things like that, and help to collect that data, attendance reports and such. And then the next slide is, I wanted to talk about something that we discussed about having a physical activity program. So I did reach out to staff to see if there was anybody that uh, would want to stay longer, so we can offer some physical activity for students uh, on top of what we're already doing. So we came up with a two-week soccer camp. Um, Ms. Willis will be leading that camp. And then as we are interviewing staff this week, um, also asking them if they would be willing to work longer than the one o'clock time that was originally posted. And so this is not exactly what we had talked about in our previous meeting, but we would like to be able to offer something to students attending um, at Turner. So Jessica Willis, she currently is teaching some soccer to the after-school students, and she said they've been very engaged and they love it. I've talked to Mr. Feldman also about, you know, what we would need to get for this to occur. And so we are going to have a two-week soccer camp from 12:30 to 2:00. So after they're done with lunch, they can stay longer. Uh, parents would need to sign them up. It would be a separate signup for that. And um, then parents would need to pick them up at 2:00, since busing will leave at 12:30. So again, small programs, starting off small, but we're anxious to see how the students like it. And then by the end of those two weeks, they can engage in some soccer games. And that is all that I have as far as the update for summer. Any questions?
Uh, somebody has.
Mike.
Hey, Mike.
Hey, um, there's an organization called Pittsburgh Soccer in the Community. They've come uh, for three or uh, three or four of our summer rec programs. They're very good. I can put you in touch with them. Um, they send students or, they, they send teachers around, and they're tend to be young people.
That would be great.
So I'll uh, send you an email tomorrow with their contact info.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. I was going to suggest reaching out to the uh, coach of the uh, soccer team at, at Chatham also, because they're, they're, they're heavy into soccer, but uh, let's pursue uh, Mike's lead since it already, we know it works. So, great, thank you, Mike. Anything else for Summer?
Um, Summer, this is Monica. I just wanted to comment. I'm glad that you guys were able to figure out how to add a physical um, component to that summer program. I think that's great. So just happy to hear that.
Good job. I was excited that, you know, we at least got one staff member interested in, in doing it. And then, like I said, as we continue to build it to, to grab and engage more staff and students.
I have some soccer balls and some nets too, from our summer rec program, if you need them, just to borrow them.
Okay, great. Yes, I was talking to Jessica about what we needed, and um, I think that we definitely will need more soccer balls than what we currently have at Turner.
Okay, cool. You can borrow them.
Great, thanks.
Anything else for Summer or Mike? All right, thanks, Summer. Um, let's see, Ms. Gardocky's up, yep.
All right, you can go to the second slide. Um, so our focus over the past month, month and a half, has really been PSSAs. Um, third and fourth grade did use Kelly to test, because it was just determined that there were not enough classrooms at Turner. Um, and it really worked out to have those two groups over at Kelly. They were bused there separately. Um, they were able to get breakfast if they needed it, and they all got lunch. Um, fifth and sixth grade tested at Turner um, with their peers. And like I said, transportation was provided to all students um, if they were not in walking distance. And I think that really helped out with our attendance. Um, I'm pretty happy with the attendance. The numbers are below. Um, and even those students who did miss, some days we were able to make them up. If they didn't come on Tuesday, but they came on Wednesday, we were able to have that time to give makeup tests while they were in the building. Um, we do have some makeup tests scheduled this week. Um, but I do believe everyone is scheduled to come in. Um, so there are no students who just aren't taking it. And then just some updates. Um, the virtual students are invited to all of the field trips, and they have been attending. Um, kindergarten is the, are the only ones so far that did have a trip. Uh, they were able to go to the zoo and bowling. Um, so Ms. Ward was able to take her group of students there, and they had a good time just seeing each other, um, getting to see the other kids and get out, um, and do something together. The science kits that were previously ordered um, from outside the box labs were also delivered, and they were distributed during PSSA testing. So I was hoping to have some pictures of that. Fifth and sixth grade will do their experiment tomorrow morning. Um, so I'll update you after that, but they're excited to get those started.
Any questions? For Rachel. Hey, Rachel, so do you have any early indication about what we think participation will be next year?
Um, I did survey families, um, probably about a month ago. Um, about 60% said possibly remaining virtual. That's what they were leaning towards. Um, so that would put us at about 30 some students.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just wonder how many of them might decide to come back to school.
Yeah, I'm thinking that will change a little bit. Um, and I know we have some students moving. Um, just some different changes overall, so we'll see. We'll see closer to the end, well, I guess we're at the end of the year. Um, but I will send out another survey, um, just to see where they're at now. I'm sure things have changed.
Right. Any other questions for Rachel? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And now the um, the, the lady who's putting the Wilkinsburg School District on the map, Ms. Anna. She finds every, every good thing we're doing and, and gets it broadcast, so.
Well, thank you. Okay, Rick, you can move forward. Thank you. So uh, the website, uh, like I mentioned in the marketing, a lot of this is redundant for those of you that attended the marketing meeting. I do have a couple of updates in here. From, from last week. Uh, sent an email out to the team. They will be doing edits on the website. We will have those edits back in my inbox on the 16th of June. And uh, from there, uh, we will update the website. And then we will survey our population um, of families and communities to see if they have any other suggestions. Um, go ahead, Rick. The WTA is streaming. Everything is running, uh, so we should be seeing numbers at the end of the month. And I will share those um, in my report as soon as I have them. Continue, Rick, please. Uh, the commercial was scheduled for June and July. Um, I did, Vanessa will be very happy about this. I did uh, get approval to have it scheduled after elections. Um, it might go into December a couple of days, but um, they feel pretty confident that we can do that in November now. Uh, and we will get the timing and the scheduling for airing as we get closer to those dates. Continue, please. The promotional video for Wilkinsburg, um, the filming is complete. Uh, waiting for the last, the, the video edit list. Um, and then the changes that have to be made. Um, so that's still in formation. I'm hoping to have that for first glimpse for you next week. Continue, please. The Wilkinsburg um, PPS partnership, that is on June 1st. I've had multiple uh, calls uh, with the team. I did ask for us to be able to interview the two gentlemen who were attending the Ivy League schools, Stanford and Yale. Um, I have not heard back whether or not they are, will be participatory in that, but that, the ask was made. So we are working on the schedule, and that should be, let's see, Principal Serrata and Rochella are working on that tomorrow. And we also, just as a side note, um, the PPS Wilkinsburg, I'm not sure what we're calling it. I don't know if you liked what I did Summer. I called it moving into the house night. Um, for us to have a, an evening with, with uh, Westinghouse. Um, that flyer has been made. They've got a couple of changes they need to make, so that, that's being done as well. Okay, Rick. So at the last marketing meeting, Ashley had asked me to get Instagram up and running. It is up and running. I think there have been four posts since that last meeting. So if you aren't on Instagram, please feel free to like us. And Ashley was right. Ms. McMichael is doing a fabulous job on Instagram. I just think that should be noted. Go ahead. And these are our Facebook stats. Those look good. For social media, we have several teachers that have contributed content. I will have the list in my report this coming week because I think Cindy was off. I'll make sure that you have, though, the, I, I think you wanted the yearly stats, right? Dr. Joe, who contributed posts? So I will have all those for you. They're readily available. I just have to download the, the Excel sheet. Niche. So you see me rubbing my temples. So we had to, or I had to figure out how to do the Google tags and the Google triggers, which was really, really fun to learn how to do. They are up and working and I am having a conference call with Niche tomorrow to make sure that there's nothing that I have missed on my end via the website or any other information that they need so that they can start getting us moving. I still haven't not heard from anybody through, through Niche regarding our ads. So that is on my list to ask them tomorrow. And for those of you that weren't on the call on Monday, these are the list of competitors. So just to give you a real quick synopsis, Niche had on our page competitors. Now they cannot have any ads on our pages. However, since if any of these schools are not partners with Niche, then we can go ahead and place ads on these pages. So they are going to give me a summation of that, as I hope to tomorrow. Go ahead, Rick. Google pages are still waiting for the postcards. I did talk to Jermaine today and he reminded me of a HTML code that I could paste into the website. So I think I'm just going to move forward with that. I will say that I've had a little bit of an issue with Ed Leo lately. They are our website provider. They don't seem to have it, people doing technical support. I sent something to them four days ago and I haven't heard anything, so I'll follow up tomorrow. But I'm a little bit, just putting it out there that I'm a little concerned that we haven't been getting the customer service that we've received in the beginning. Go ahead. Google Analytics, everything's up to date on that. You'll be getting a report on the websites every month at the end of the month. Continue, please. Yeah, that's fine. The WAMO ad, we're all done with that. That's been placed. I asked Ms. Harris if we, if she knew of any enrollments that we received for pre-K or kindergarten? And she was not aware of any at this point. Dr. Joe asked me to, to look into a school app. I did reach out to Ed Leo. They have promised me that I would rehear from somebody today. I did not. I will follow up with them tomorrow to see if I can get that, at least find out what they do, you know, what, what services they offer. And I will keep you all posted and then we need to get involved in the WhatsApp app too. So that's, that's on my list. Authorship program, most of the, most books have been written. Kelly primary books have been delivered. Turner books were edited by Mrs. Boyer and completed this past weekend. I've been purchasing the books and going through them again with one more edit. The only grade I still have to purchase is sixth grade. As I mentioned, a published author lives here sign will be given to every student. The sign should be delivered sometime this week. So Carrie, just so you know, there'll be a delivery at Kelly and at Turner this week. And I don't know where you want to house these signs, but I promise I'll get rid of them on the 26th of May when we have our event.
Okay.
Okay. I mentioned before during the marketing meeting that I will be investigating the International Baccalaureate Program. That will be mid-June, but I will start having reports. If there's anybody on the board that would like to be part of a committee, that would be awesome. Please reach out to me so that we can formulate an educated, calculated decision to see if this program might be a good fit for our district. Go ahead, Rick. Q Carnival's November 16th. We'll have more information on that, but that's all situated and ready to go. Go ahead, Rick. So gym items, we have gym items. So we've, we've talked about learning loss. And we look at that as mental, emotional learning loss, educational learning loss. But sometimes we neglect to look at the physical learning loss. And after speaking to our gym teachers, they have noticed a significant learning loss in our kids. So I have submitted some items that we can give to our students, put our logos on them and send them home with them over the summer so that they can actually play with toys outside and not be cooped up inside playing on a computer or a game. The, they, they vary. The gym teachers pick some really cool stuff. One of them is a dice with exercises on it. So you throw the dice and you have to like do 25 leg lifts or you throw the dice and you do 22 pushups. It's really kind of cute. And then, you know, there are stretch bands, there are light up shoelaces for the little ones so that when they run, it lights up faster. And so Vanessa has the list and I'm sure she could share it with everybody. But I'm looking forward to passing out all these fun, fun toys for the kids and, and having them just be able to play this summer. Go ahead. Does anybody have any questions at all? Good.
Nice work, Kelly. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Rob, do you have a little finance?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. My notes up real quick. So the, Joe quickly mentioned this earlier about the roof. So we're looking at the roof of the admin building. We're going to put that out to Ben here pretty soon to, to resolve some of the issues that we're seeing there. We're also working through the final stages of the budget for next year. So thank you for everybody that has contributed to that and getting information for Rick to help summarize that for us. So we'll be meeting a good bit these last six weeks of the, of the fiscal year to get that nailed down. So thank you to everybody, all the administrators and teachers for that too. Also with obviously the capital project that we are about to enter into, we're also considering borrowing. It's a really good market now to borrow money. So we are looking at, Rick's going to submit the paperwork to, to see, you know, what kind of deals we can get with, with borrowing money. So we'll have more information related to that in the next time we meet. But that's something that we're going to push forward just to do some due diligence there. But otherwise, you know, I think we're, we're, we are in really good shape with the fund balance this year. We're going to end with a surplus. So we're going to look to what, see what we can do strategically and plan it for the future while also making sure that, you know, everybody is fully funded across the board. So all good things thanks to Rick and the team. But yeah, we're in really good shape and more updates, especially next month in more detail.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. All right. Next week we will vote to approve the minutes. And while we're on that subject, I sent a note out to everyone about the format for the minutes based on Mr. Stedley's comment or request last month. And, and I told you that Rick's solution to that was going to be to post the, to do the minutes as they are now, but to attach a recording of the meeting. And I was asking folks for, for their preferences, board members' preferences on how they would like the minutes to be structured. So anybody want to talk about this? So that we can come to some, you know, some resolution for Rick.
So if I can, just real quick. So the recording we're talking about is the actual recording of the board meeting where it's a live video stream of the meeting would be posted.
Okay.
Thank you, Ed. This is Vanessa speaking. I had responded to that request with my preference that it's somehow be written even in bullet point format. So it doesn't need to be for my sake, a written transcript. But I, as with many board members, my time is, is limited to go back and watch like a three hour video. So, and I understand that might be a lot for, for Rick to do too. So one of the options that you even recommended, and this would be something maybe that, that Rick would have to think about is whether somebody else like goes through the slides and, and Rick just takes that high level summary of what's going on. I'm open to how we figure it out, but seeing the meeting minutes written is also helpful when we're in a meeting because I can't like pull up the video if I need to double check something that was said.
Anyone else have a preference here?
Yeah, I'll just say that I don't, I don't think that posting a, a video or a recording of the, the meeting session is accomplishing the goal. You know, the idea is to try to digest what was discussed into small understandings, you know, of the nature that a board secretary would record and make sure that the, the points that are made during discussion are recorded. And that, that should be easy to review. We all have to approve the minutes at the end. So, you know, with the next, the next month's meeting, you know, we vote on whether, whether the minutes captured what was discussed. So I don't think having a recording is the right way to approach this.
So someone responded and suggested that we could approach Jermaine and find out if he's going to attend those meetings. Would he be willing to do the technology piece that Rick is now doing to quote, run the meeting? Or, or to get someone, someone who can do the running the meeting part so that we can be taking the notes? Any thoughts on that?
Well, I mean, I don't want to have to burden Jermaine with that because then what happens is he, he doesn't get paid for that. And then the next day he comes in, you know, based upon his contract with the IU. And so what will happen is I can just start to re-listen to the meeting from the tape that I was talking about and make the notes from going through the meeting for a second time.
Okay, that's how Debbie did it. So that's, that's great. That'll solve the problem. So we can try that out and see how that will, how that works. All right.
Thank you, Rick.
Let's see, we have a couple instructional staff items, Dr. Milosnik.
He's muted.
I apologize. I think by now I'd get that. Oh yeah, we, board will be, actions requested approve the unpaid leave for athletic Cameron, our social worker for effective May 2nd through May 6th. And I know it's after the fact because, and for reasons I can't go into. If you have questions or concerns, we can meet in executive session at some point. And the same thing for, no, I just lost it. Where'd it go? For Elizabeth Freiberger, behavior specialist for the following days, May 16th through the 18th, May 20th, May 24th through the 27th, June 1st through the 3rd and June 7th through the 9th. And again, if there's any questions or concerns that I can't discuss, but if we want to meet in an executive session, we can do so. And for new hire, board actions requested approve Lauren Javens as a fourth grade teacher at Turner Primary at Step 7 with a master's degree at $50,165 in all her terms and conditions of the CBA effective May 27th, 2022. She is the teacher who has been serving in a fourth grade long-term subposition all year long. I've had numerous emails and from her peers, from administration advocating for her. But this was a position we had to wait on for legal reasons for a previous employee, but now this position is open. So we're requesting that board approve the hiring of Lauren Javens. FMLA. Board action is requested to prove the intermittent FMLA for Darren Kennedy, Special Education Director, effective April 27th, 2022 through June 20, or June 30th, 2022. And we have a retirement of Mr. Russell Bush, our steam teacher at Kelly Primary, effective June 10th, 2022.
So what's, what's the FMLA? I guess we can't discuss this. Can we, may I please request an executive session to discuss the FMLAs, please?
Sure. After, at the end or what do we want to do there, Ed?
I think we, the smoothest thing would be to tack it on to the end, Rick. If you can set that up as a separate link that we can go to at that point, rather than jump out of this and then come back. And I'm not sure how smoothly that would work.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Is that it?
That's it for, for those items? Those instructional staff, yes.
Okay, all right. So we have some committee reports. The Joint Tax Committee didn't really have one of its business meetings. There was however, a a meeting to discuss issues that had or had not been worked out. But some problems that date back a year and a half at least. Issues were discussed, commitments were made. We'll see how well that works out, but it was a pretty much a good faith discussion, I think. Matt, you can add any details that you want. Interestingly, I was reminded at the meeting that it's not, it's not just sort of a, I don't want to call it a free for all. It's not just anybody who attends those meetings along with the board president. It's specified, the resolution that we passed actually specifies that it's the business manager and the, and the finance chair or his or her designee who would be the representatives at those meetings. So I can set out the dates. I think it's the last Monday of the month, starting at five o'clock. If there are any proposals to discuss, if there aren't any, then we don't, then we don't meet. So that would be my report. And I'm not sure where we are with.
So it's not the treasurer then?
No.
Ed, I think you knew this before, like about three months ago, you brought it up. And at the time, Rob was finishing or he's probably still working on his, his thesis. So at that point, I think that for their designees came into effect. In any case, yeah, we'll, we'll have to circle back about whether anyone's going to show up to that because my understanding is that we should have three people showing up. So, so hopefully we have a commitment or even a fallback commitment there.
Yeah, it is important that we do. Otherwise, otherwise, you know, a meeting could have a quorum and proposals could be approved without the school board being really adequately represented there. And that's something that we wouldn't want to have happen. Yeah, and probably if I did bring that up, I just forgot about it frankly, because so many meetings were skipped. You know, there, there hasn't been a joint tax committee meeting in all of this calendar year, I think. So that's how that would happen. So, and you know what, and I don't know where we are with, with Forbes Road. Did I say I was going to take that? I think, I think perhaps I did. I have to pack.
I believe it was, I think Michael, right? Michael Rose?
Michael, Michael was ready to preliminarily take that on, but it, it really depended upon the nature of the meeting schedules and whether those could be attended remotely.
Great.
I think was a backup for that. She's not here though, so I don't want to speak on her behalf, but we should also circle back on that.
Okay, I'm not sure when their meeting is. There's got to be one coming up soon. So, all right. And Mr. Stedley, anything on Eastern area?
The, okay, so last week we met with the architect from Draw Collective, actually the, one of the architects minions. And we took a look at a roof again. Today, uh, a contractor, a roofing contractor, Pennsylvania Roofing, was, was there to look at the roof as well. They were able to observe ponding, uh, due to the rain that was, uh, early, that occurred early in the day. They've expressed some concerns about the nature of the drainage and whether it's adequate to drain the roof. That may be the root cause of the problem and why it failed to begin with, we'll find out. But, um, at this point, we're moving forward with architect and contractor negotiations. Uh, separately, there is a, um, a small effort to replace the, um, some of the carpeting in the main portion of the building. That's, uh, that had to be bid out for contract because it exceeded the amount that we normally, that we normally can, can accept contracts without bidding. So, uh, but that work is in progress right now. I've, I've talked about that with Valerie Warning, and she's managing that project. She's the VP we elected. Uh, we did elect the officers at the last meeting. The officers did not change. Jane Miller remains president, uh, and Valerie Warning will be the vice president. And I think that's everything.
Okay, um, let's see, Dr. Boss, I get treasurer's report next week. Which is the?
Yes.
Go ahead. Actually, you'll read it next week when we vote on it, but anything to comment on or anything about the, you know, your analysis or going through all those papers this week? I had a chance to look at it.
No, no, we just, the biggest concern was whether we were, we were getting this, uh, fairly large bill from the new architects and whether that was going to be, you know, part of our discussion, if we had that done in the, uh, previous, uh, renovation thoughts about Kelly. So there were some other questions which Rick answered, and I was grateful for that. But that was the biggest thing, if we're going to have, you know, duplicity and that stuff. So hopefully we'll get that figured out, depending on what happens with, um, Mr. Gray.
All right, thank you. Uh, let's see, we have a couple finance, or we have travel coming up here next, Mr. Liberto, and then ESL Joe.
Yeah, the travel is just the normal monthly travel for conferences. Uh, the transportation log is there as well, along with, um, some of the backup. Dr. Joe asked me to attach some of the backup for one of the trips that the teachers are going to be, uh, going on.
And for the ESL, that's just our English as a second language. It's our MOU with the AIU that we do yearly, um, because they provide the support, um, the personnel for, for our students. And I did have Matt take a look at it. It's just a, a regular thing that we do each year as we continue to use AIU.
Uh, Dr. Joe, could you briefly talk about what we do do for our ESL students?
Well, we are, our, the personnel, we don't have our own staff for ESL instruction. So the main thing that we get from them is, um, a staff member for that to support pre K or K through six. So that's our, the main reason that we have them. You know, we have had talk about possibly hiring our own staff as well. The numbers fluctuate so much, so it makes it difficult to do that. And I'm actually tomorrow having a, a conversation with, um, the director from the IU, just ensuring that we're not being overcharged, um, for the number of kids that we might have and so on. So I want to clarify a few things with them tomorrow.
All right, uh, I think we have a couple finance items here, Rick.
Yeah, so first item A is the Forbes Road East, um, budget, which we have to approve. Um, and our contribution for the Wilkinsburg School District for the administrative portion is for $4,874 for Forbes Road East. And you can see the summary budget, uh, below. And we, we do not have any kids there, or that would be a tuition based. Homestead-Farmstead exclusion, uh, that is part of this, uh, new, the school code that we have to approve. The amount of gaming revenue that the district is receiving, which is the $805,132, uh, based upon the number of homestead-Farmstead properties in Wilkinsburg, 2,446. Everybody that has the homestead exclusion will receive a $329 refund in their, um, tax letter they receive in July from the district. Last year it was 326.
And, uh, budget?
Oh, sorry, I was looking too far. Uh, so again, we'll just be passing the preliminary budget, which is only stating that we are using the Pennsylvania Department of Education, form, um, and it's just a certificate that is signed by the president and myself that we're using the PDE, uh, format and website to, um, prepare our budget, along with the, obviously our spreadsheets and everything. And again, it's just the, um, the standard format that we have to go through. And then we really start to make the changes and alterations to this budget between now or next week and June 30th.
All right, thank you. Dr. Milosznik, the, uh, the wellness policy will be up next week for its first reading, I think, right?
Yes, yeah, um, that's, um, we definitely need the first reading, and this is something that all schools have to have. And Messiah Noddy needed, um, we need an update of this. And so we'll be asking for first reading of it. It's a little lengthy, um, it's about nine pages long. So if you have questions or concerns about the program over the next week, please don't hesitate to reach out.
There is one new section added to it, which is in bold, and it's about vending machines that we are required by the food nutrition, up in PDE to put into this year's wellness policy.
Okay, so we'll have a first reading of that next week, or we'll vote on one. Let's see, so student bags after toys.
Uh, I think this is me. Um, I, uh, I emailed everybody what Kelly alluded to in her PowerPoint, which was, um, a draft of the different, um, sports equipment that, that she proposed sending home with students over the summer. You know, Kelly, would you like, would you like to explain if you're still on, uh, your sort of process here?
So, yeah, so I, um, I got, I, I have a vendor that I've used for other, um, events that I've hosted. And he gave me probably a list of maybe a hundred toys. Then I sent those, that list to Mr. DeVito and Mr. Feldman, and asked them to be selective in terms of what toys they felt would be best suited for their children and at the grade level. And they both submitted, um, their top items. And, uh, those are the, that's within the list. Some of them I did not have, like the jump ropes, I didn't have a picture of, but I think that's pretty self-explanatory. But everything else on that list should pretty much have a photo of what the item will look like. I believe everything can have our logo on it, and that's included in the price.
Any questions on that? All right, thanks, Kelly. This is pretty cool. Uh, let's see, so summer youth programs, uh, I don't, I don't think Dr. Thorpe could be here today. So she asked me to, to read this one. So, uh, next week she'll be asking for us to approve the, um, the partnership, the arrangement that we have every year with the borough, but at a, at a higher amount. So it'll be, um, matching dollar for dollar up to $12,000 to be paid for from ESAR. That's usually paid for out of general funds, but I guess we can use ESAR this year. So, and, uh, an intermediate step there would be to do a survey of some kind to find out what our kids would like to have. But, um, so this is, uh, this is a big jump. So it'll be very interesting to see what happens to participation.
This is Vanessa speaking. Uh, when we sort of got the summary, uh, the budget is going from about 6,000 to 12,000, and it wasn't entirely clear what the, what the plan was. And there was some discussion of a director being hired, and the cost of the director was estimated to be around like 4,000. So, um, is there any insight into why the budget is 12,000, not 10,000? And then also what is going to be done, um, with the money? Or like, what's the, what's the plan? What will be extra this year that the budget is, is double?
I can't answer any of those. Um, we would need Juanita here. She's been in the discussions. Mike, I don't know if Mike Millware or Stone, I think he was maybe in those meetings. But I don't, I don't know, um, what they were.
And in this summary, it sounded like she was recommending 6,000. So I just, I did not understand why that was now 12,000. All the information pointed to six, so.
12 is, 12 is what she asked me to, um, to put in. So maybe she'll be here next week and she'll be able to, you know, answer a question on that before you vote. But, um, I just, uh, relayed what she requested to Rick to put on the agenda. I don't know, I wasn't in the meeting. I don't know what, what additional, uh, uh, programs would be offered.
Okay, is there any information? Because she sent us a summary of everything and recommended six, but, but she then recommended to Rick 12s? Or, okay, I'll ask her next week.
Yeah, so I don't, I can't, I can't answer. Okay, um, who, somebody else is up here? Rick?
Oh, you're muted, Rick.
Talked a little bit about this at the finance, uh, meeting tonight. We've been discussing putting up a storage shed since we lost our maintenance facility to Chatham, um, over at the Graham Field. So, um, this would be to replace the two trailers, uh, that are being stored with maintenance equipment at, at Kelly Elementary School. This is a, um, a 30 by 30 by nine foot, um, shed with three rolling doors that would be put at the, um, so-called tennis courts behind Turner up there in the, in the back street. This would be to use for our maintenance facility and, uh, storage for maintenance equipment. One of the things that we did talk about during the finance committee meeting is, is Vanessa had, uh, brought up some ideas about looking into some land subsidence at that facility, where that facility is going to be to make sure everything was, was copacetic with that. And also, um, looking at either a concrete pad or a gravelstone pad at that location for this particular building.
Any questions there?
Uh, Netflix, um, for some of the newer board members, Netflix has used our high school in the past. They're, they, now that things are starting to be opening back up here in Pittsburgh with movie productions, they're looking to come back and do a filming of a pretty popular movie, I guess, with some high profile stars at our high school. Uh, and they need the building for 15 days. It is a school setting type movie, so I'm not exactly sure what, what the name of the movie is or anything yet. But, uh, and they're willing to pay us $7,500 a day for the 15 days.
Hey, Rick, I have a very weird extra question, um, and this is the Kelly in me speaking. But, um, is there any way that, to your knowledge, Netflix could like take some of our students as extras if they're like particularly awesome students, so they can brag to their friends?
Yeah, they do do that.
Okay. I think that would be a really cool little sweepstakes to maybe attach to the attendance, or other types of, uh, great things we're trying to motivate our students.
And I was going to mention to Kelly Hannah that this would be a good thing to promote for us as well with the community. Um, it almost did not, um, get approved by the borough because of the bridge being closed. Uh, they were worried about traffic, but they made some arrangements with Netflix and, and, uh, using certain streets to get the equipment there. So they're going to be okay. So, yeah, but they do use our students when, when they can. Uh, the MOU, this is a yearly, um, standing item that we have to put on the agenda. This is for safe schools. This is required by the safe school program that we have, that we have to have this. MOU with the Wilkinsburg School District Police Department, Wilkinsburg School District and the Police Department of Wilkinsburg approved.
Yeah, what we have next on there is we're requesting the board approve the student envoy project, um, that we discussed and had them present last month from PPS. There's a training involved for the staff, uh, that would be, uh, $10,000 total, $5,000 per, per day. And then the PPS such all staff will facilitate the teacher leader envoy training at no cost to the district, and we can pay, use for ESAR funds. So this is that leadership program that was presented last month, and it's another way for our students to, um, be embedded with PPS and some of the things that they're doing there as well for those transitions. All right, where are we at here? The SEL screener. Okay, we've been talking about this for about a year now, um, working with, um, Kelly Majerski, um, and Liz Freiberger. Unfortunately, they can't be here tonight. So what this is, it's, it's, it's a screener, uh, for social emotional, um, concerns or issues that student might be having. And with the screener, it actually provides a, uh, an intervention, uh, process. But we're also going to have, there's a curriculum for it, a pre-K through two curriculum called Zones of Regulation. Um, and then there's a, uh, three through six called AIM, Accept, Identify and Move. So that's what we'll be asking. The total cost would be about $14,715, which includes PD. But then the total for both is $33,525, taken from ESAR funds required to be spent on SEL. This is a requirement of our ESAR funding to ensure that we're meeting the social, emotional learning, um, and support of our kids. Um, this will replace, um, our weekly second step. We've been doing that for a number of years, but it just doesn't, it hasn't been very effective. Um, and you'll see through the proposal and the information that we're providing, and what some of the questions I ask or what our school districts are using it. It is becoming the accepted program for many of the school districts, and you'll see some of the schools on there. You know, like Mount Lebanon, Riverview, um, even Allegheny Valley, a list of other ones. So this is the accepted program. It seems like the schools are going to. This is being recommended again from our school psychologists and from our behavior specialists. And this has been a year in discussion too as well.
So Joe, is this the kind of, um, uh, I know that certain kinds of screenings for, uh, for emotional and psychological issues require parental support or parental approval in advance. This, is this, this isn't of that caliber, is it?
This won't be of that caliber. Um, I, I kind of like, uh, the way, um, Mrs. Majerski stated today is it's student-driven results and not teacher-driven. So what, it, kind of like we have a tier for, a tiering for our math and our reading programs. So tier one is a teacher implemented. So first thing when they come in the morning, um, that's when some of these curriculums will be implemented, just getting students. And it's, what's great about it is it's going to be now the same terminology, K through six. So the language that our kindergarten teachers using, it will go, you know, our fifth and sixth grade teachers will use. And it works with our school-wide PBIS program. And then our tier two, it might be something simple like small groups, uh, with students that are having the same issues. Uh, Ms. Majerski mentioned today, maybe a lunch, we call it a lunch bunch. Um, three, tier three would be more intensive, um, and would happen more frequently. And it might need some outside support, um, that we, you know, it might be SAP referrals and so on. And this will be done twice a year, once in September, and again, I believe we said about January or February. If I'm missing anything, Summer, you can chime in. I know Summer's been into those conversations as well. So.
Yeah, I think you covered it pretty well. The pass, like Dr. Joe said, is something that many school districts, if they haven't already started using them, they are looking to start using them in the fall due to ESAR requirements. And like Kelly said this, uh, this morning, that it will be student-driven versus teacher-driven. And like Kelly said this, this morning, that it will be student driven versus teacher driven, so we'll be able to. You know, uncover some things that we may not see in the classroom.
All right, anything else here? Okay, this item on iPads, yeah, I didn't, I didn't know it was going to be on the agenda, but that's okay, so I wanted to make the board aware that. You know, board members, when, when people come on the board, if you need one, you can get a laptop or an iPad to use for school business for the length of your term on the board. We have two recently departed board members who have been asked to turn in the iPads that they were using and there, there's no response. From them at all, so we're, we're down to iPads that had been distributed to board members. Jermaine, I think at some point indicated that he wasn't sure how, how much these could be worth anyway, because they were older generation iPads. One of them doesn't even have the tracking software on it that all the rest do, so. I wanted to throw this out, I don't know how aggressive we want to be in. In getting equipment like that returned. You know, I get, a next step might be to ask, you know, Matt to send a letter or something, I don't know, Rick, you've reached out several times on these, right?
Yeah, Lori Seaman, you know, who tracks our iPads, has sent. Emails and reminder emails after reminder emails to both parties.
Okay. So.
Yeah, I suggest. Let's, let's send a bill. For the iPad. To each of these two people. Send it to be a registered letter. And that's all.
Okay, I can get a price from Jermaine and invoice them both.
Yeah, these, I mean, just, you know, he's, he's going to replace it with, with, you know, the current generation of technology. Which I think is appropriate, I mean, that, that is school property, it's, you know, I think all the board members understood that. When they got them and they, then they, you know, they were expected to be returned.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, certified mail for sure, that was a good idea.
I mean, all, all we want to do is to show that we care about them, we, we're not just going to let it go. We don't necessarily, I don't, I don't think a letter from Matt is the right way to go. You know, but, but, you know, the fact that we're accounting for it and we know where they are is, you know, that, that'll be made obvious by a certified letter.
All right, and Rick, you said you can do that, right? Okay, good.
Yes, I will do that.
All right, anything for the good of the order here, anything that we didn't get around to?
Ed, I don't know if you want to mention Ashley, why she's not here tonight?
I don't know why, oh, does she know, a baby?
She had her baby today.
Oh my gosh.
You, yes, she had her baby boy today.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was so dense, I said, I saw pictures of a new baby and it didn't even register that it was Ashley's. I didn't even know what that text was about, Monica, that's so funny, thanks, thanks for telling me. So, and everything's, everybody's fine?
It sounds like it from, yeah, from the text, baby looks good and, yeah, mama's doing well, it sounds like so. She, she texts us to let us know she had the baby, so I figured she wanted us to pass that along to everyone, you know, seeing that she's not here tonight, there's a good reason.
Good reason, thank you, thanks, thanks for, thanks for clarifying that for me.
And just, we went from something very positive, not something so exciting, I just want to give everybody a heads up. About a week or so, Linda Lafferty, her son Joe passed away, both Linda Lafferty and Joe have been the, they've spearheaded our blessings. Backpacks, blessing bags. For our school district for a number of years. He's been battling some health issues for 30, 40 years. But he did pass away, we did, the school, we did send flowers, our kids prepared some letters, Mrs. McClellan had them prepare some letters. So we'll get those delivered to her, and she was very appreciative when I saw her at the funeral home, so. I know many of you don't know who Linda is, but she's been doing this for years, every Friday, we give a bag of food to our kids of treats and things like that. She has a group of ladies every Wednesday or Thursday, get together and pack these bags, and men, they just. This is something they've been doing for years in the Wilkinsburg School District, so just wanted to give you guys a heads up on that.
Uh, thanks, thanks for that, Joe, and I'm glad you, I'm glad you sent something, Linda just lives around the corner here, and I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know that, so, yeah, thanks for that. Anything else?
Okay, I, I have one thing, I'll just mention, Kelly, Miss Hannah, I, I have just sent you an email regarding the Wilkinsburg Fresh Market. Which is going to be run again this year, basically it offers fresh vegetables and fruits to community members at no cost. First come, first served, this will be the second Friday of each month, there'll be two events. We used to run this next to the admin building on Wallace, but they've moved it down the street, past the busway next to the hospital. On your way into the city, so I was just hoping that we could get the word out to our community and especially before the school year ends. Hoping that, you know, folks that could take advantage of this will do so.
Okay, I'll put a graphic together and get it out on social media, put it on the website, probably tomorrow.
But that's huge, thank you, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Anything else?
Ed, the invite went out for exec session.
Okay, good. All right. Bye, everybody.